Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with the Commissioner's Work Question of August 24th. Committee is being recorded, it may settle, it may even become part of public record. Another public hearing today. Is there anything that you want to update on the CARES Act?
Yeah.
You? Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Uh, no, just wanted to let you guys know we have, we've had four, um, what, what conferences? Probably scheduled another one by the end of the week. We probably had something like, let's say total of maybe thirty people attend over the course of those and had a lot of good questions. There were a lot of people that were on the fence about even getting involved and after they did the web conference, they were, they applied because they, I think that there's a lot of concern that this, that they wouldn't be eligible, but when they kind of saw how things were run, I think they were supportive of it. We've had, I believe, over twenty applications already. Um, the, the, the total estimated loss in those applications is, uh, over nine hundred thousand. So, we're, we're expecting that by the end of the week, especially with the deadline being Friday, that we'll definitely go over the million dollar mark for, uh, you know, expenses and, and losses. So, um, I think that, I, I don't, I would say that I'm glad that we're gonna be able to help people through this program. I, I can't say that I'm glad that that's true in the sense that it's unfortunate that they're in that position, but, uh, it's, I'm glad that, that through this program, the county's gonna be able to help, help these folks, so.
I think Jim Decker and the WCCPI have done a really good job and were instrumental in, uh, working with the businesses. Um, and, you know, any situations where there was uncertainty, uh, about the process, uh, Jim would reach out to myself and Jeff and, uh, we would get some additional insight if necessary from ZNA. And there's some good questions posed about eligibility and, um, types of businesses or types of losses. So, I think things are working the way we expected them to, which, uh, we always want to position ourselves for success, so, so far, so good.
A couple of things that we're gonna have to, one thing that we're gonna have to make a determination on is due to the number of folks that are applying and due to the nature of the applications, we may want to talk about changing the parameters for this phase in the sense that, um, s- some portion of the applications we're getting already are from organizations that are 501(c)(3)'s, but they have no employees. Like, so, for instance, like an organization has a fundraiser once a year, they pull in twenty thousand dollars. That's their fundraiser they're applying, uh, but they have no employee base. The, the question is gonna be, do we want to take away from the organizations that have employees, that have a footprint, that have,
Fixed costs.
Fixed costs and, and give to them if the, if the amount is greater than the, uh, than the, than what we have. And I think that the, the suggestion was brought up to, uh, basically mandate that you have to have at least one employee in order to qualify for the program. And, and I think that the way I would frame it is, is that if, in the grand window, we go over the total, like, the total approved losses are greater than the grand window, that we basically then, at that point, state that you have to have one employee in order to qualify. And, and then that way, um, you know, it, it, I mean, obviously we wanna, you know, I would love to give them money, you know, but I, I, it's kind of one of those situations where I have organizations that could fold, you know? Like, and then like, for instance, I'm a member of the Lions Club. I didn't put in an application, but, you know, we raised, you know, eight or ten thousand dollars a year doing different stuff that we're not gonna be able to do, I, I, but we're not gonna fold this year because we didn't get to raise it, you know? Whereas there's other organizations where they're literally holding on by a thread and I think there's a case to be made that they should be, get first, first opportunity.
I'm sure the employee thing is exactly the right breakdown though. I mean, take, for instance, a 501(c)(3) fire department, they don't have any employees, but.
Well, obviously, we could, we could set it up however, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could be maybe quantifying that first, you know, what that dollar amount is for those entities that are fundraising entities that, you know, aren't at risk.
Probably goes back to the funding on purpose, right?
Well, yeah.
If you're a 501(c)(3), you're raising money for other 501(c)(3)'s or something, but.
Right. Well, I think, I think that's kind of my point is, is I guess there's gonna be some variables there that we can all, I'm just letting everybody know that's possible.
Yep.
Okay. Cause I think those are all the points, so I totally agree with you.
Yep.
Okay, any else that cares?
Um, I, I just wanted to say too that, um, Haynes and company and Henske and Associates has been exceptionally good to work with and I think is a very fit for the program. Really glad that they're on board with this and, uh, they bring a really good, uh, perspective on it and have had a lot of really good suggestions, so.
And we may look to them for some insight on what we're talking about just a little bit ago.
Well, they, they, they're continuing to kind of ask questions and basically their position is they're going to, I mean, obviously there's gonna be like an ongoing dialogue about this, but they're gonna take that into their report, you know, as far as like how they kind of see, cause each, it, it's becoming apparent that each case can be, there's a lot of variables there.
Right.
Um, real quick on Rodney Haynes, um, making some headway, uh, actually now got a map that's close, I probably of some various vertical assets that would allow us to, um, potentially partner with an IAN internet service provider that would, uh, be able to provide internet to places within a couple miles of each of those towers. So, I'm talking with MobileCom, uh, Eric Cawkin specifically, and he thought was gonna send me a proposal by this meeting so that we could look over it, but he did not get it yet. Uh, but he did send that, which is hard to guess.
Yeah, that came from MobileCom then?
Yes.
What is MobileCom?
You know, Ranco?
Yeah.
They're kind of like Ranco's competitor to ourself.
Okay.
And they are working with Forest County right now to do a similar program in Forest County, so the semi connected with them. But the Northwest Commission facilitated.
So, what would their proposal be then?
The proposal would be, apparently they're actually interested in getting in the market of becoming an internet service provider.
Okay.
So, we would need to help facilitate getting a hold of the vertical assets um, and potentially taking back in licenses so that the 911 center can use them in future for dispatch. But then they would be the ones that would, you know, you know, pay, they would, they would only equip them and everything and maintain it. They would be the service provider. Um, which is great for me. I mean, I don't want, particularly want the county government to be an internet provider. But if we had vertical assets that we were leasing to a private company, I have no problem with that. So, that's, I'm still working on the strategy, but we're making progress.
Well, I think we've talked about the fact that maybe it isn't one size fits all, right? That we might have to look at various and centering different options based on the area. So, I mean, the more that we can, ideas come to us that we can brainstorm, you know, it may not be one size fits all, but it still may be able to become a comprehensive plan. Yep.
But this won't be, I mean, this would be in partnership with the existing providers, with Tinsel TV, MobileCom. There could be many different providers that help, cause, as you can see, like half the geography of the county in Red Hash are underserved. There's no one provider that's gonna step in and solve that.
Correct.
No silver bullet, so. Okay, I think that's it. Cares, um, you went into discussion, uh, leading women voters contacted us asking if we participated in a kind of town hall forum specifically on COVID-19 and we had a date and the homeowners wanted to gauge, should I, um, or are you guys gonna do that together?
I think that if we were, if it was gonna be the Commissioner's Office, it'd be all of us.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And then we'll just start with.
We'll have to have some questions that got asked that will even reach out to others, so that will be.
Kind of horse and such a whole data for us.
Yeah, as it relies on the, you know, the economics and the economy and stuff.
And we'll be, yeah, Jim Decker's side and.
Yeah.
But we really, I think we really do need to do it together, cause I can, I don't even know that stuff as well as you guys, since you're working on this inside. Okay, and then Insightly, Dan and I went through, uh, I don't know how many we looked at, probably grand total of fifty different contact relationships management systems narrowed it down, I think in about five or six or seven, then we actually sort of priced out and we did a few, uh, webinars, really narrowed it down to Insightly, which is really pretty common contact relationship management system. The importance or reason that it's really come to the forefront is that during COVID-19, we were getting calls at the courthouse, at public safety, at 911, at the hotline number, at Love Bank, at WCCBI, et cetera, and there was no one place to kind of put all the contact information and the, the case that's coming out of it in order to follow through. So, what we'd like to do, or hoping I suppose, is that, uh, some CARES Act money could go into, uh, getting Insightly set up so that we would have a system to take calls like that. It could also play into other offices too, so, um, I don't know what kind of system your office is used for instance, but if someone called in with a question, um, you know, conceivably, Dan could take a note, for instance, um, you know, the person with, why with phone number, you know, fill in the blank, email, uh, is trying to contact selections about some question, whatever, texting the information, assigning it to you, um, and then there's just an automatic trail, like it'll email you, but it'll also let her know that you received it and when you answer it and that sort of thing. We particularly have that in Commissioner's Office and it seems like every other day we get a call that kind of gets sent out all three, and then we don't know who ended up calling and we're not really all in the office together at the same time. We need to verify when someone else called.
This is the time that I almost feel like we should have one number and then all call.
I actually agree with that.
Funnel through, because it just, it gets, it gets crazy because, um, you know, people will call each one to see who they can talk to.
Right.
Have two different conversations, then, like, everybody's trying to figure out who responded first and then, you know, I mean, it just gets.
Well, I mean, is that more of a, is, is that more of an organization and a change of process than it is meaning, can Dan pick up our lines and is, is that something, no, Cam can?
We can have it set up, but right now I cannot pick up your lines.
Is that something that you've done in the past? Okay.
Well, technically, I mean, we can sort that out with IT later, but.
Sure, sure. Well, I just, I guess my point is if we are able to utilize, if we have a, is it a process that we can improve or do we need another product?
Okay, so there is a process problem.
Right.
That is separate. There are many different process problems that could be solved on one solution. So, very narrowly thinking about the Commissioner's Office in the future, that's not really the motivation for this. This has more to do with dealing with WCCPI, Love Bank, EMA, 911, Commissioner's Office. Everybody, like, you can't just fix that by running all phone lines through Pam or something. That's why I'm saying you need a solution. This is relatively affordable one.
I think one of the things that I get concerned about and I would be great to tie that into it is, um, whether it's complaints or, you know, different correspondence. So, we don't really track, and so there's no way to verify like what, what was happening.
Yep, all of that can be tracked in this. The other thing is, I know we don't wanna have yet another platform. They have to go log into separately. This integrates with your Outlook and you can put it on your phone as a app, so.
Does that have a, it's a subscription service, right?
Yep.
So, what's the, what's the terms? I mean, we could draw, but if it doesn't work out.
Right, it's monthly past the, uh, what's your term?
We didn't go annual, so it's eleven thousand.
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
Eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars without the discount, ten thousand.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for a decision today or anything. Um, certainly something that.
So, so when it says twenty users, does that mean twenty individuals?
Yes.
Okay, and is like, WCC?
Individual accounts, so if like WCCPI was one and all three people over there logged in as one, that'd be mine. My expectation, but, again, we don't need to get into the details of it.
Sure, no, I.
I just was letting you know that that was kind of the solution to potential.
Got it.
A solution to multiple problems we've been having. I don't know where it falls in terms of the ranking of priorities. So, you know, that's what I'm trying.
Sure.
Is there a, is there a contractor in here?
Not yet. Okay. Policies and procedures, uh, we met with HR last week. Yeah, last week, and we figured out all the procedures and instructions and forms that were needed for community resources. So, we have that template, we will figure it out. Projects, projects you wanna bring up?
Well, hand in hand with that, you know, we looked at the table of contents of the employee handbook that we're updating and added some more modern policies and procedures. We're gonna probably even talk about social media and those types of things as well, so. And I know that we received some policies and procedures from you, which is pretty impressive. Do you feel like you've got that pretty well handled now, or do you feel like there's?
Oh, that's just a drop in the bucket.
Okay. I suppose afraid of.
Yeah, that's just a drop in the bucket.
So, we're gonna be working this week with Lisa on a number of things. The, the work instructions and stuff, I think is something that's gonna be an ongoing thing, but the, the, the core is gonna be review. The, the book related to the, the poll workers, the, um, you know, all the information related to that, to make sure that we can kind of summarize that. Um, and then that'll probably get transitioned into the work instructions and stuff like that. It's something that we have already to start doing the trainings, like how everything winds. The other thing is, is, uh, today and tomorrow, I'll be working with Lisa in order to put like a proposal that I wanted to do last week, that's just too much fun, um, related to assistance for her and, and the process at the end for, um, you know, pre-camazing, like have, like having people here to do all of that, um, and, and then the assistance through the remainder of elections so that she has enough hands to, and we can get those people lined up within the next month. So, the goal's gonna be to have something, um, because we have an election board meeting. Did we, did we do that? Did we schedule that for, for prior to Commissioner's meeting? We did, did we? Okay, so we'll have to set up like, uh, we'll have to set up an election board meeting then, which is fine. But, uh, so that we can get that proposal to you guys to have, to have the ability to review, and then we'll set up an election board meeting.
For Wednesday?
Well, yeah, but we'd have to advertise it, like, so.
Otherwise, it would be the first one in September.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think we can talk about it up after this, about when it'll be, and then we'll make sure that we advertise it properly. Cause the, the thing is, is we don't, I don't know if we wanna wait till the next Commissioner's meeting. I think that we wanna get it done now, so if we can get everything lined up.
I would, I would agree, and, uh, if the Commissioner's, a lot, there's been a recent development, I think today on the Trump suit, I don't know if it's, if the news or not, but.
It was all dropped?
It's been, um. Yeah, Judge Nicholas Rangin of, uh, the Western District Court has entered an order staying the Trump suit, basically putting it on pause.
Wow.
Depending on the outcome of the case over in Pennsylvania Superior Court.
Oh.
So, he is sort of allowing, he's, uh, entered, I didn't even write the opinions, it's been, like, a gallon of about ten minutes before I got here. But the order stays the case, basically the present pause, nothing, nothing will be done. But he says that if the, uh, Pennsylvania courts do not, uh, take, uh, action to rule on the essential matters of the case by October 5th, and, and either party can move, um, to remove the stay and get judicial relief from the federal court. So, that, uh, effectively, the federal litigation is on pause right now. And there were many, um, notices of depositions that were being issued. And now, in the Commonwealth Court case, there's actually been a petition to actually have the, uh, the case reviewed by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. So, that, that matters to me quickly, so. I, I would, I would expect that, this is just a prediction, I would expect that to be granted, and I would expect the Supreme Court to issue some warrants before October 5th.
Oh, sure.
I believe mailing ballots will be due, I mean, could, could begin to arrive, you know.
Mid-September is when they do start going out.
I mean, to me.
Mid-September?
Yeah, I mean, my thinking about it is, is that the judge, um, has, like, keep the back door, I'm not sure how often it is, because you're already going to see backdoor stuff. He could have just tried to go to the Pennsylvania courts.
You know, it seems to have a, 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 a poll.
Well, it has to do with, uh, with the poll and doctrine, and essentially you have a state, you have this state court action that, uh, could, could handle everything, and, and the, uh, federal court is not interested in ruling on issues that are purely matters of state election law.
Yeah.
So, if someone, if we get to October 5th, the Pennsylvania courts haven't ruled, a party could file a motion to lift the stay, but they could only go back to the court on, what, any matter that's not purely a state law issue. So.
Let's do the best we can.
Yeah, just staying tight and do our best.
That's right.
Okay.
Make sure we cover all our bases.
Any other projects?
The other thing is, is I need to talk to you after this about the farm polling.
Please.
Sure. Um, just cause I've gotta get that on now before, before, uh.
That's why I'm like, I'll be broken for executive session if you want to, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Those things we're just gonna add.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, there's, yeah, I mean, honestly, we're, we're at the finish line, so.
Okay, good. Upcoming Commissioner's meeting. We'll see that we will have a public hearing on CDG. And, uh, resolutionally, if that housing or placidary bill is in CWA's can space financial plan. Potentially, I suppose, potentially could have something like the Insightly agreement or something like that, but, uh, I don't know. Is there anything else, Cam?
Domestic relations will be tapping in, I hope everyone else agreements on her too.
That's right. Anything else? All right, let me, do you have any else you need to add to the agenda? Please email me in, Pam, by noon tomorrow. I'm sorry, closed business tomorrow. Apartment committee updates.
No, but closed business today. I have had it on the agenda twenty-four hours in advance on Thursday.
Right, which is by thirty tomorrow. You need more time, obviously.
But, yeah.
If there's anything.
We'll do it as soon as we do it.
You pressed the magic one.
Okay. Apartment updates, I wanted to, uh, I'd like to make a change. So, what I'm proposing is that we, uh, start a little bit of new system. So, um, you two are probably gonna have to do a whole lot, cause you've already come and reported to us. But there are other departments where, uh, we don't have a whole lot of information from, and, uh, we've kind of looked at, such as the, uh, the city warrant, those monthly reports, um, to their council. I really like what they do, so what I'm proposing is that we get a monthly report from each department, uh, written. Basically, it could just be a quick form and like it to touch on a bunch of things. And we do the Friday before, like, first Commissioner's meeting of the month. And we include all the departments that report to the Commissioners, so not elect other elected offices or, uh, judges. We'd send it to Pam, we'll have to figure out, we'll have to work on form, but in general, uh, what we are trying to accomplish is understanding the projects that are backlog in progress or complete. So many projects kind of come to us for a vote on something and then we don't know where it's at. Or we don't know if they're in the pipeline and then just kind of gets from the, uh, projects. Uh, we wanna understand if there's any staffing, uh, needs or requirements. We'd like to look at some statistics, nothing too burdensome, but, uh, you know, violated example, monthly, if you'd like to know how many bids, or how many properties are in the placidary date, or how many people have registered to vote in the last thirty days or something like that. So, we'll eat, you know, come up with like three, five, six stats or something for each department, um, that would be helpful in understanding. And then constituent complaints, if there are any, and what resource needs. So, that's what we're generally asking for. I don't think it'll be too burdensome, which would probably take, once we get it worked out, you know, fifteen minutes, a lot of, once a month. But then we're gonna have kind of a more consistent rhythm. Uh, so really the reason we wanna do it is partly because of public accountability. Uh, so that there's, like, once a month, we're in the rhythm of letting the public know what the offices do. We want to get in a rhythm that will inform the Commissioners of any important topics. We want to be a structured way to report rather than kind of the informal conversations that we might have, so that there's a way to document it. And, um, probably most of, especially, we want an appropriate way to record and retain the information so that the record rate to no records officer kind of has it permanently. That really applies to some of the committee meetings that happen that aren't part of, um, currently part of public records, so like the department head meetings. You know, as, there are minutes taken, I suppose they're emailed around, so we could always get them through searching the email, but like, if that was gonna be right to note, we'd probably have to like go find the secretary of that year and search their computer and try to find their files, whereas if it was reported in the Commissioner's Office monthly, then, or however often they meet, then it would be part of the consent agenda. It wouldn't need to be something that's explained every month, much like, uh, the city could just end up in our consent packet. If any of the Commissioners had questions or wanted to talk about it, you could, but, um, otherwise, it would just be kind of a routine thing that's put in the packet every month. We would take, you know, a couple minutes to look over it before the meeting, uh, bring up any questions if needed. Otherwise, just pass it as part of the consent agenda, wouldn't even necessarily bring it up unless there's a reason to. Again, we moved at the beginning of the year to having, uh, each Commissioner liaise with various departments. So, if you have, uh, projects coming up, it's a good idea to kind of raise it with that person and make sure that they're aware of it, because they're kind of the gatekeeper, you know, to the other Commissioners, and in that way, we don't step on any sunshine issues, so if any departments wanna meet with the Commissioners, so to speak, uh, it's more appropriate to meet with one, your one Commissioner, and then, um, if there's a need to bring it to the work session or a Commissioner's meeting or something, then you've kind of got that person advocating for you on behalf, uh, of your department amongst the board. So, it's, we don't have sunshine issues, but also you've got somebody in your corner that's kind of helping shepherd your project through. Any questions?
I just have a couple comments. So, the first thing is, is, um, I think that's a good idea. I mean, obviously, it's something that we've been kicking around for a while, so definitely scored over it. Uh, one is that, I think that, I think, I, I'm assuming that if you ask, um, Lisa and Phil, I'm not putting you on the spot. My assumption is, is it's gonna take more than fifty minutes to put the report together per month, especially if you're gonna include complaints. And I just wanna state that I'm perfectly fine with that, that it's gonna take some time to put these together. And I, and I would prefer that they be, like, the complaints be written into it, so if someone launches a complaint or is complaining to you about, like, the service or whatever that'd be included, I don't think anybody should be scared of that. I don't think it should be something where everybody is afraid of how they're gonna live or whatever. And the big reason that I say this is that there are other counties and other municipalities that do this in order to keep a record of it, because it, there, there have been multiple times where we've had an issue where there's been a complaint or somebody says that they called three times and I talked to this person every time and they told me this, and we have no ability to litigate that or have a, a. they told me this, and we have no ability to litigate that or have a, an opposing view of it, because we have no record of the correspondence of the discussion, and so, I think, I think that's gotta be a piece of it, and, and the idea of the report, again, is, is, two, we don't, it's really difficult to track historic data in this place, because it's really based on who's in a position at any given time, so, it, it, you know, it's really impossible for us to know five years ago what we were doing in particular department, you know, the director changes and all of the institutional logists taking with them, so, I definitely support it, I would just be, like, I think that for the directors, when they hear about this, or there's a conversation about this, gonna be a lot of concern about, well, what does this mean for me, or what if I, am I gonna look that, or what, and I think that it's important to understand that the Commissioners support everybody in their position, it's not there to be hypercritical of them, um, it's more of, there's just all these different things that we need to do and see in order to make decisions, and, and I think that that, that reporting function has to be some part of it at some point. You know, the other part, the, the only thing I would add is, is that the problem with the liaison bit, or the one problem is, is like, for instance, you, like, a, a director ends up talking to one Commissioner, and I'm, and I'm just as bad at this as, as anybody, if I forget to tell you guys the conversation we had, then, you know, and, then it's not their fault, you know, they thought they were talking to the Commissioners's office, like, but if they put a report in saying, like, like, the Assessment Department's a good example, like, you know, they put a report in saying, um, we started doing criminal work, I'm, I'm putting the tax bills out, this is how far we got, we expect to have them out, you know, the second week of September, whatever, whatever the date is, um, you guys get that report, then if somebody, say, Amy, forgets to tell you that's happening, uh, then the director has provided all the information and they've done everything they can to know from.
Exactly.
Instead of, instead of complaints, can it just be correspondence, instead of?
Sure.
Well, I, 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 yes, absolutely, like, I don't wanna kind of create a system that just facilitates more complaints, I'm not trying to say that, I, correspondence is a good word, I just say complaints, because that's the thing where everybody is always terrified of how they're gonna look, like, they think that if they get a complaint, that means they've done a bad job, and, and that's not, there is no way to do these jobs without getting complaints, I don't, I don't care, I, I, I don't know what you would do, i- if, if I had a department that didn't have a complaint, I'd be concerned about that department, I mean, seriously.
Well.
Like, like, they, they have to be doing, there's, they, they're either covering something up, or they're, you know.
Or they're not doing anything.
Yeah, they're not doing anything, or they're not reporting anything, and so, uh, like, I, that's the thing that I would stress, because I'm sure that when people hear about doing a report or, or sending information or written record of anything, there's this fear that they're going to look that, and, you know.
Well, I, I mean, I take it the opposite way, honestly, I think this is an opportunity for them to share with how they're, how they can shine, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Some special things that you've done.
Well, I, I.
Particularly with you right now, right? I mean, you're in the throes of all kinds of things, and to be able to share with us the accomplishments that you put forth during the, the month, um, is something that you can be proud of sharing.
Absolutely.
That's a big piece of it.
Good suggestion, change it to correspondence, because it's really, I mean, you can put in attaboys if you got, we definitely get some of those, you can put complaints in there, you can put an important letter from the Department of State, or.
Right.
Changes in the law, or potential legislation or something that could impact you, stuff like that.
Perfect.
Great?
Sounds great.
Okay.
And I, I, and again, I totally agree with you guys about the positive end of it, like, you know, and I, and I think that stressing that through thing, I'm just, again, just stating what the director, how the directors are gonna see it, they're gonna see it as more work, and they're gonna look at it like, okay, well, what if somebody calls and yells at me, and then I have to write it in, that's, those are the two things that everybody's gonna think about, and even if you say, no, this is positive, it's really positive, and that's why I'm just saying, just to stress that it's not something that you need to be scared of.
I'm pretty worried correspondence will be very long here next month, so.
Well, no, I mean, that's, the thing is, is like, we get calls and we get complaints and stuff, like, Phil's entire life is a complaint.
He's a forty hour hate complaint.
Well, no, I mean, I, I, I don't, but, like, Phil's job is literally spending every day on the phone with people who are.
Somebody who didn't do a recent.
Who are not happy with what's going on, and, so, I can just picture him sitting over there going, when he leaves here, going, now they want me to report on all the people that are pointed to me, or whatever, you know, or, you know.
Oh, yeah, and there's, there's some offices that would use that one another, right? I mean, honestly, yours are kind of routine, so I don't want, like, a list of every single person.
Yeah, there's, there's letters there now, and, so, I.
Yeah, and, same thing, but, you know, if there was, I don't know, a complaint that's for your office, then, you know, there's a, voting precinct that doesn't have an ADA complaint, like, whatever, something like that, that's more of the complaint I'm looking for, not the routine thing, more like things that we should try to fix. In your situation, ninety percent of your complaints, we're not gonna fix, they are what they are, but, like, you.
An actionable item.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at, I'm not looking at complaints for complaints sake.
Like, like, a good, like, a good example, and I'm, I'll use another department, it's like the Assessment Department, when someone calls and, um, they, they, they're not happy that someone came onto the property to measure the addition that they put on, and they think that there should be, you know, a notice, and that it's illegal that the people are on the property, and they're gonna sue the county, you know, or something, you know, or there's some kind of, like.
I think it's to that point that it becomes redacted, probably.
Well, no, but, I mean, that, that, like, like, if we never, like, there, there are complaints, like, in things, and, and, like, let's put it this way, there have been times where stuff like that has happened, where there's been, like, a serious situation, and we, it's not forwarded to us. And, and that, that kind of stuff needs to be documented, so that.
It was the nature of getting blindsided.
Exactly, well, blindsided, and then there's times where it isn't addressed immediately, you know, and, 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 uh, so, that's kind of what I, that's what I guess, I agree.
Well, yeah, I think as you, we draft what these, uh, reports look like.
Right.
We can reveal them against the Right to Know Act and say, this is what we would expect to receive in a report, and this is like, if we had to redact, this is the kind of content we would expect.
And define whatever reportable item, like, you know, so that, that everybody isn't, like, in Phil's case, you know, writing every single complaint that they get, but the, the ones where, you know, 'cause you have them every once in a while, where there's a, there's some ambiguity in the law, or you feel like there's, you know, something that can.
Yeah, it'd be lengthy letters and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If there's what you want to know, yeah.
It's good.
All right, uh, schedule wise, note the Farm Bureau picnic is on Wednesday, and I am not going to be in at all Friday, I'm taking a comp day, work on hiatus. Anything else?
I'll be in and have a look.
Okay. Any calls for executive session?
The farm calling.
The, you just wanna do that, you're, yeah, I don't particularly wanna be part of that. No, it's like, you do, you handle it.
Comp day. Anyway, uh, yeah, no, I was just gonna say that we could just go over it, and then.
Okay.
And then just.
Draft an agreement.
And then, we have an agreement draft, there were, there were a couple of items in it that just, you know.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So, nothing more? We're here.
Thanks, everyone.